We will take up our ten fifteen public hearing. We're open to public hearing at ten twenty seven?
Yes.
Ten twenty seven, public hearing is open, staff report.
I'm Galen Orwood, Assistant Director of Planning and Building Services Department. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, thank you. This is a public hearing and it is that you consider the recordation of a lien in the office of Lassen County Superior in an effort to recover costs incurred in the execution of an abatement of a public nuisance ordered by the Judge of the Superior Court of California, County of Lassen on October ninth, two thousand fourteen. Through the order of granting injunctive relief for the public nuisance case number five eight seven seven seven. The abated property is located at four oh one First Street, Westwood, California. The APN is one twenty five dash one twenty one dash thirteen. Said property is owned by the estate of Margaret Collins. Staff recommendation, one, receive report, two, conduct to public hearing, three, adopt the resolution to A, order the cause of the abatement to be specially assessed against the parcel, and B, direct staff to execute and report a lien against the property with the office of Lassen County Superior. I just want to take a very brief moment to recognize and thank County Council's office and especially Deputy Counsel Stephanie Skene for all the help with this, especially submitting the complaint, and as well, all the departments that have been involved. And there have been a lot of departments involved and to help bring this forward. So, on October nine, ninth, two thousand fourteen, Judge Tony Mallory granted an order granting injunctive relief for this property. It was ultimately executed on, in June of two thousand fifteen without any incident. And really what we're here for is rather simple, which is the lien itself. Government Code, Section two five eight four five D and E, and Lassen County Code, Section one point one eight oh eight oh, allow the board to recover costs, you know, for the abatement of a public nuisance. So that's what we're here for, is here before you. The costs are summarized in the packet on page two. The total cost was thirty six thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars and fifty four cents. The backup material for that is in the packet. Really, and the reasons why the property was abated can be found or explicitly described in the complaint itself. The pictures, I apologize, we only had a black and white copy of the complaint. However, I do have the electronic version of the pictures available, and I can show those if you'd like to. Really, that's all for the staff report, no such questions.
Any questions from the board on the staff report?
Boy, when I was looking through the show, I noticed that this thing started back in two thousand and six. I mean, is this a typical standard timeframe, or it seems like it's strung out for a long time?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Well, no, it's not, because part of this, it was, in two thousand and six, we didn't know that the building was occupied. The daughter of Margaret Collins, the estate of Margaret Collins, was discovered to be in the property, but unbeknownst to the department. And then that kind of intensified the urgency of it. And then also, once we were allowed inside by the property owner, and we saw the extent of what's, you know, the concerns and the violations that are in there, that kind of pushed it as well. Ultimately, counsel determined that a complaint for injunctive relief was the best way to go.
It wasn't a normal abatement, it was very complicated. It became very complicated. Okay, any questions from the public on the staff report? Madam Clerk, has there been any of them corresponded?
No, sir.
Anybody wish to speak against it supposedly? Anybody wish to speak in favor of it? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at ten thirty one and bring it back to the board.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a causal linkage between the unsafe, unsanitary, unhealthy, the terminology used in here, condition of the property, and the estate of Margaret Collins?
Well, the property is still confirmed this morning, it's still in the estate of Margaret Collins. And that terminology is from the complaint, it's taken from the complaint itself, which was granted. So, I would probably defer to counsel to answer why those particular...
Do you mean to say, Mr. Supervisor, did the condition of the property cause her demise?
Yeah.
Or lead to it? I don't know the answer, I don't think so.
Related to or linked to those conditions of the property?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the condition of the, certainly, if you look at the pictures, it's not a place somebody should be living. But I think a lot of the condition of the property was, to the degree that it existed at the time of her demise, it was definitely exacerbated by a person that come to occupy it thereafter, which was a relative. Let's stop there.
Monica Collins, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, thank you.
You said, "No, thank you, counsel," that was what I was kind of hoping was not the case, but that terrible.
You didn't do it in the staff report.
When you drive through Westwood, and you see the house stood out, like, you know, it's like, wow. I mean, I remember we were, the board, several...
There was a lot of animals living in there, like cats too, I don't know how many, but...
Yeah, don't blame your cats.
Anyhow, we don't need to go there. Any more questions? Seeing none, most pleasure to the board. I would support moving ahead with the abatement.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that we adopt a resolution, I guess it would be fifteen oh six one.
For the cost of the abatement.
And order the cost of the abatement to be specifically assessed against the parcel and direct staff to execute and record the lien against the property.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any more discussion? Madam Clerk, would you pull the board?
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Uncle?
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on to Mr. Number two again.
I'm excusing myself.
You should have.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the board's aware, the county had been contracting with Modoc County for the services of an ag commissioner for the last couple of years. The, from a functional standpoint, Mr. Hip Hill's been running the department on a day-to-day basis, but there was a need for the county to have the signature of somebody qualified as ag commissioner for the purposes of obtaining our unclaimed gas tax. So that's essentially what we've been contracting with Modoc County to do at a cost of about thirty thousand dollars a year. And that contract with Modoc expired June thirtieth. And I attempted to negotiate a lower price for those services because I felt that they were exorbitant. We were, for a couple of signatures, we were paying around thirty thousand dollars a year. And I was unsuccessful in those negotiations, they declined to renew the contract.
So that's the reason why they put Jeff and I and Tony in the elevator? Now, now you're... I was wondering what the budget was.
That's what they, that's what you call a shakedown.
Right.
So, in lieu of having that contract, of course, we still need to claim our unclaimed gas tax, which represents about eighty thousand dollars annually. There's a provision by which the board can make a temporary appointment of an ag commissioner for someone who doesn't have all the certificates that are required to become an ag commissioner. That's what I'm recommending the board do today in appointing Mr. Hip Hill. Mr. Hip Hill is...
How long is that appointment?
The appointment would be good for up to ninety days.
Can you say Craig Hamble?
Craig Hamble, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig Hamble. And, and so that appointment would be good for ninety days. During the course of that ninety days, Mr. Hip Hill is optimistic that he will secure our, all of the requirements necessary to become a full ag commissioner. We'll be dealing with that issue as that comes about. But in the interim, this will allow us to claim those funds, and thus is my recommendation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, that's a good question. Just in case Mr. Hip Hill doesn't pass his test, which I'm very confident that he will, but for some...
The pressure is on.
How might I actually go back and can we renew this?
I don't know the answer to that. We could certainly ask again. I think the best answer to that is, the state is going to require that we at least attempt again to recruit a qualified ag commissioner for appointment before they would approve another temporary.
But I think where the carrot that goes with the stick is that they control the release of those funds. So, they may say, "Okay, you can go ahead and reappoint him for like another ninety days or whatever." But the funds that you would get would not be, they would withhold those funds for you. And that's what they use as the leverage to make sure. And I think it's important to note for those who are new in the audience, these out of thirty-eight million Californians, there's like less than a hundred and fifty people who are qualified to hold these certificates that Mr. Hip Hill is aspiring to gain. And there's fifty-eight counties, so, you know, the gene pool for ag commissioners is like really small.
Yes. More like a puddle.
Not even a puddle.
And Mr. Craig...
It's snowflake, it's snowflake maybe.
Maybe. Mr. Craig Hamble's in the audience, he may wish to address the board.
Do you have anything you want to say before we vote, Craig?
Oh, yeah. Come to the podium and state your name.
State your name, I just...
State your name and just stand there.
Well, you're just, you're just uncomfortable.
Craig Hamble, Lassen County Superior Department.
You're just uncomfortable because you have a jacket and tie on, right?
I was joking. The Food and Act Code twenty-two four point five requires the license services of an agricultural commissioner. And the reason that got put in there in about two thousand and eight, is when it became the rule, is the counties were either not going out and filling position of ag commissioner, and part of the duties of that commissioner, we have to do an annual financial statement to secure unclaimed gas taxes. And those statements aren't handed in a timely fashion, which is October first is when they're due. It holds up the rest of the payments for all the other counties. So, that's why it's in the, it's in the Food and Act Code, so... So, don't hold up all the payments for the other counties? No, we're not, so. And then back to the dealing with Modoc, I do have my sealer's license, we're contracting for ag commissioners slash sealers, and I employ licenses, it seemed, and I didn't think we needed a contract for those services. So, thank you.
Questions for Craig? Thanks, Craig.
You studying? Oh, yeah.
Okay, most pleasure to the board, you have a motion to approve the appointment of our chairman for the designated time pay roll action.
I'll make the motion to appoint Craig as an agricultural commissioner.
Second?
Six.
Motion to second and third, is there any more discussion? Any questions in the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, ayes have it. Okay, we're good for three minutes.
Can you send the supervisor back in, please?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Go back to, get to H one. We did that, let me thank you, we're on H three. H three.
Oh, meetings for November and December, I could decide on the agendas to discuss whether or not we'll have meetings during the holiday periods. Typically, we don't. I think we can manage around those dates in terms of getting things on our agendas if we need to. I think up for discussion would be the meeting of the twenty-fourth, and the meeting of November and the twenty-second of December. Those typically we would not hold unless there's, you know, some reason that comes up between now and then. I wanted to get the board's direction on that.
If something comes up, then we have a special meeting, just...
What was the lady from Bieber on the bill?
Next week.
We're going to do that next week.
Next week.
We're going to handle, have that handled.
You're going to have time to get that on the agenda needs today?
We can get that on the agenda for at least discussion.
There'd be, I, there's no time to do any bidding on, I mean, I'm not sure what, I didn't, I didn't realize they're even that far.
Yeah, as I've thought about that, if, if it's, I think the discussion is, do we want to move in that direction or not? And if the board wants to move in that direction, it's going to take staff some time to do it.
Right.
There's a whole process associated with it.
It can't happen fast.
You'd be lucky if you had the building installed by next week. Maybe you started the process now.
But I think the item for next week will be a real general discussion as to whether or not we want to move in that direction. And if so, if you direct us to do so, we'll take what time we need to, to evaluate and probably develop specifications. Now, on that, with that pool of money, is there a time limit on that money that has to be spent by?
Yes, we checked at the state, we have until the end of fiscal year two thousand seventeen need to spend that.
So, June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Yes.
My recommendation is that I'll wait till June first, two thousand eighteen.
No.
No.
All right, we have it on next week's agenda, so, I don't have any problem with not holding a meeting on the twenty-fourth of November and the twenty-second of December. If something comes up, we can...
We can, we can always call a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I think if we're going to cancel them, we should give the public as much notice as...
Right.
As we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Nobody around in any, okay, that takes you to three.
So, that's the direction you wouldn't cancel?
That's the direction, correct. H four, CSAC.
Okay, so, there's a memo in your packet from CSAC regarding board director appointments. The terms of the CSAC directors expire, I believe, as of the, yeah, the first date of the annual conference, which is December first?
Yeah, the conference is December fifth.
Yes, December first. And so, let's see, Supervisor Chapman and Alba are...
I'm the director, so, this has to be approved if I'm going to continue as the director and be able to participate at that meeting on December third, is the next board of directors meeting. I am attending the conference and was planning on attending and being a representative.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Jim as director.
I move to appoint Chapman to stay there so he can go out with a bang.
And Aaron is alternate. Aaron is alternate.
Yes.
We got a motion, second?
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any discussion? Clark County, Clark and the board.
Are you both going to attend the conference? Because that's on my list.
It only, it says does the member, I'm attending, yes, that's a yes.
Okay.
And it needs, this has to be sent in by Friday.
Any more discussion?
Well, they said they sent this to Susan or somebody, but they didn't get it, and I got a copy of it that morning to Susan, and I realized it hadn't gotten through to her. So, I appreciate that part taken care of. She's good, she gets up and crippled.
Okay, we got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, ayes have it, H five.
Richard is going to be attending that, and I would encourage if there's any other member of the board who would be interested, I, you know, I, it's not something that just the director goes to, it's really, some counties will send all five of their board members, it's not cheap, but it's, it's a good opportunity to see what's going on. Yeah, you learn a lot about it.
When is it?
It's the, it's the first week of December. It starts on the afternoon of the first, and pretty much it's over with by Thursday night. And there are some training modules that go into Friday morning. And I know Richard does this, the CAOs and a lot of the staff does the stuff on Friday morning. If you're, if you're interested, it was, it's not too late to make reservations, and, you know, if Jeff Sabo would go, or...
It's in Monterey.
It's in Monterey this year.
Who wouldn't? So, it's factoring out all the time.
You know. It bounces north and south, you know. Anyway, if you, if you do, I mean, let me know, and Regina can help set you up and get that dialed in. But I would, you know, it's going to be a good conference. In fact, one of the speakers they have is a former governor of Michigan, Jennifer Granholm, or something Granholm. She's supposed to be speaking. She basically taught us how government business is supposed to work.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We have moved to H five, Health and Social Services. Yeah?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm not sure I like being the last three items on the agenda, with still an hour or better to go.
Don't break it on.
I'll try not to.
You don't have to, you know, the last second.
Yeah.
You're early, you leave early.
You don't have to go to the last second either, right? My first item is an appointment to the Partnership Health Plan of California Commission. I'm sure most of you are aware that Phil Noack retired, or resigned as the CEO of Northeastern Health Clinics back in October. He was our representative on the Partnership Health Plan.
And what happened to him?
He resigned.
Did he still enjoy his term?
No, he resigned. And at the moment, they have an interim director up there.
And you could do a lot of them up there.
Yeah. And so, our healthcare collaborative is down to just a few members, me being one, and Lona from the Indian Health Clinic, and Kathy Harshbarger from, she's the CEO of Vander Lassen. And Kathy was interested in, we're here to promote her, we're recommending Kathy Harshbarger as Phil's replacement on the Partnership Health Plan out of California Commission. So, basically, she would serve as the Lassen County Representative to that Board of Directors.
But I'm concerned about the pattern, because you had the Vander Lassen guy, Bob Edwards, before.
I told her it was the kiss of death.
I was going to say, he gets appointed to this here, and within a short time, he's resigned and gone. So then, you got that Noack guy from Northeastern, and then he does that. So, if she takes this appointment, is it, she's not going to leave, is she? They go through, they go through administrators more than Northeastern does.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't promise anything. I could be your representative to the commission, but I'm not intending to stay for the full four-year term either, so...
What?
You're not unfamiliar with my plans. But we're recommending Kathy, I think she'll make a great representative for Lassen County.
I would, I would...
And she knows all the places.
You have to ensure that we fill the vacancy with the appointment of Kathy Harshbarger from Vander Lassen.
Second, motion to second, any more discussion?
Much with the proviso.
All in favor, say aye.
She has to stay on for four years.
Waiver of the Thirteenth Amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, ayes have it, thank you, Mary.
Thank you. So, boy, all, my morning is all about Partnership Health Plan.
Done, all right.
So, there is, back in April, the Partnership Health Plan of California Commission, their Board of Directors, amended their composition, the composition section of their bylaws to just increase the ranges that would, by which they determine how many representatives a county has. So you can see there, the old range, the first, the initial range, whereas it exists today, was zero to ten thousand entitled county to one representative on the commission, that's zero to ten thousand partnership health plan enrollees, or Medi-Cal enrollees. And we are right around between forty-five hundred and five thousand, most of the times, our population. So, we definitely fall into that category. The current range for the next group is ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, that's what entitles to two commissioners on the board. And twenty-five thousand to forty thousand entitles us to three, forty thousand plus entitles us to four. They're enlarging those ranges so that zero to twenty-five thousand would entitle us to one commissioner. That doesn't affect us because we're still not anywhere close.
Right.
Twenty-five thousand and one to forty thousand would entitle us to two commissioners, forty thousand and one to fifty-five thousand would entitle us to three commissioners, and more than fifty-five thousand and one would entitle us to four. Now, I have to let you know that the twenty-five thousand and one is not consistent with the actual bylaws that partnership, that the commission passed. This was the recommendation of County Council to clarify if, for some reason, that county had exactly that number of people that, you know, which way did they go? Did they go to the one, did they go to the two? And I'm just required to point that out to you, that our ordinance will not be quite consistent with their bylaws. I don't think it's, it's never going to be a problem for us, I don't think it's a problem for the commission. In fact, they told me it wouldn't be a problem, they just write our ordinance this way.
I think it actually speaks to the proposition that the bylaws of the commission have ambiguity. And ambiguity is, is if there is a precisely, an even number of Medi-Cal beneficiaries, that you don't know whether you've got the lesser number of representatives or the higher number. Not that that's ever going to be an issue, but we prefer precision.
What Bob said.
Leave it to the attorneys.
So anyway, I am here this morning to ask you to hear this, I'm introducing the ordinance or the amendment to the ordinance, and I can either read the amendment to you, or you can waive that, and then, you know, whichever you choose there, and then to provide direction to staff.
Why you choose to look over with this look on her face? She wants to read it. She wants to read it?
All right, you guys, let's...
It's relatively short, I could read it if you'd like me to.
No, we can...
It's okay.
If I move, we...
Introducing, waiving reading?
Uh huh.
Introducing, waiving reading?
Yes.
Is that your motion, sir?
That's my motion.
To waive the reading requires unanimous vote, but I think that should be obtained.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Ayes have it.
It's an ordinance, it should be pulled. This is just for the introduction, and but, but it should still be pulled.
Now, should we, we need a motion to pass ordinance, right?
No, we'll be back next week, it's a two...
We're going to go back and pull and board. You've got to keep counsel happy.
Ordinances take two readings and votes, unless you have a public hearing that allows you to produce and adopt it.
There's no such authority for that in this situation.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye.
I voted under duress because you looked at that scowl look that she gave me when he killed, it feels weird.
And this matter will be on next week for consideration of adoption. And that would be the final step in the amendment of that county's...
Okay, now we got, now we got number seven. You want more money?
Well, I don't need more money from you, I got more money.
This is actually beauty, she wants to be able to spend the money that she got.
Once we went to Medi-Cal Managed Care and Partnership became our managed care organization, we became eligible to participate in the intergovernmental transfer, intergovernmental transfer process, or IGT. And as I've talked to you before, it's a NRTMA, it's a way of drawing down federal matching dollars for activities that we already do, and the state does not reimburse us for, because the state doesn't participate in that particular Medicaid program. If the state did participate, we would participate through the state. But since the state doesn't participate, our managed care organization wants us to participate and continue to do these activities, we've actually always done them, only now we're going to be able to draw down the matching funds. So, we, as you can see, the kind of the history there, we wound up with a net of three hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that was even after deducting the ninety-three thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars we had to pay the state for processing our claim. But I have to tell you, it was pretty exciting to open that check for nine hundred eighteen thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. And I wished it had been made out to me personally, that would have been really handy.
I open it all the time.
Yeah, you do. So, but by getting, by participating in IGT, not only do we get some extra funding by pulling down those matching dollars, it demonstrates to the federal government that our managed care organization or partnership, and the partners within that organization are working hard to raise the community's health, and even beyond what the state is asking us to do through Medi-Cal. And so, Partnership can now go back and raise provider rates, which should attract more providers to our network. So, that's good for everybody, we should have more providers in the area. I have to tell you, I sat through a, we were supposed to go to reading yesterday, the weather was not really good, so we decided to stay here and participate by phone, and we got to see a presentation on raising community health and that, using the social determinants of health. Because seeing your doctor, he might tell you to take a pill, or he might tell you to do something else, but if he's not asking you, are you homeless, are you stressed out, all these are the things that affect people's health, then you might get better and you might not. But if we work together, the medical providers and the social services providers, to ensure that families have homes and adequate food, and eat, and that children are cared for, and that parents have the help they need to make sure kids are cared for, and that they get to school, and that succeed in life, and that everyone can manage their behavioral health issues... and that everyone can manage their behavioral health issues and their stress, we can really raise the level of the community's health altogether, and that saves money all around. And especially for, oh, Dean left, especially for the jail, eventually. So, you know, it's all about cost avoidance these days, and then the Affordable Care Act will require to do this. So, as we said, we've got these funds, and by using them in this manner approved by Partnership Health, we should be able to draw down even more funds next year to continue this. So, in our plan, that was approved by Partnership Health, and these activities do have to be approved by Partnership, we have proposed a portion of the cost for a full-time medical clinical manager, and we're thinking about like a family nurse practitioner, or a physician's assistant, someone with a little more medical authority than a nurse to work at our clinic, and help make sure that people with community behavioral health issues also get at least a connection to a medical provider, that they're getting a little extra monitoring, because if you've got behavioral health and medical health issues, those comorbidities can really lead to early death, expensive hospitalizations, all kinds of issues that we want to avoid, people with bad health. We're also proposing another behavioral health clinic nurse, because with four locum psychiatrists, we're keeping our two nurses running all day, and we'd like to get another one so we could do some QI activities, quality improvement, generally nurses are very good at that, that's what they're trained to do. We'd like to get a medical insurance benefits coordinator at the Behavioral Health Department to coordinate Medi-Cal, private insurance, all those things, just like your other providers use benefit coordinators. We'd like to have some additional residential treatment services dollars available. There are, although the number of residential treatment facilities is declining, because under Medicaid and the Affordable Care Act, now they've tightened up those licensing requirements, but I expect that to continue to rise up. But we've never had sufficient funds to pay for all people who needed those services, so we're boosting that pot with $25,000. And then, we are working with an organization to help us achieve accreditation for the Behavioral Health Plan. And then, on the public health side, we are going to spend some money hosting a data hub for the ASQ, ASQSE, that's Ages and Stages Questionnaire, Ages and Stages Questionnaire, Social Model. It's a way of evaluating children to see how they're doing, if they're progressing and developing like they're supposed to. And so, having that information helps us assure that they also get the services they need to do better when they get to school. Another, public health nurse to conduct home visiting, for every, our goal is to have a public health nurse visit every new, the home and family of every newborn in the county every year. And then, some SDD outreach, training in case management, testing in case management, and expanded adult vaccination program, and we also set aside $10,000 for community-wide prescription drug awareness campaign. And that is specifically, has to do with the opioids. We've heard from people that there's quite a problem with prescriptions ones. And now, we're also hearing that people who are having their prescriptions cut back are purchasing illegal heroin on the street because it's so cheap, and that is boosting, I mean, it's replacing the opioids that they were being prescribed. So, we've got a problem in our community. We want to address that, and we're working with Partnership Health and the hospital, and then there's a regional collaboration that's working on it too. So, it's not just us, it's everywhere in the state, everywhere in the region, it's a problem. And then, we are setting aside $4,000 for our local oral health program, because we think that's a good program and helps kids, and there's not a whole lot of coverage under our programs for oral health, which strikes, has always struck me as odd, because...
Will this be for kids, I don't know, first five, does it go from zero to five?
Zero to five.
From zero to five, but it's not for five, their funds don't go for after five.
Right, right.
This would be...
This would be available to the tooth fairy to use as she feels is necessary.
So if there was a kid that's eight or 10 years old, they could be, they would be funded through that side?
Yeah, things that Medi-Cal doesn't cover, she can, she can make recommendations for that. And then, we're putting aside $35,145 in an IGT reserve, so that if something costs more, or if next year something happens and we don't get to draw down as much, we've still got money to keep these programs going, so. Any questions on that?
President, information only?
Information only.
Okay.
Would they be put back to budget, do you have to do the budget?
Don't be in the mid-year.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a good one. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, next we have the CIO report.
Mr. Chairman, the Modoc County CIO, Chester Robertson, and I have been trying to synchronize board schedules so that we can have a meeting of the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District, which is comprised of the board members of Laassen-Modoc County. With the date that we somewhat settled on yesterday, and he's gonna be proposing his board today, and I'm proposing to you, is that we do that on December 10th in Aiden. They have a strong desire to hold it in Modoc County, because we've had it since Modoc-Lassen flood inception, I think in Laassen County, they'd like to hold it in Modoc County. So they're, they've made that request, and so what I would like, maybe from the board, is your availability on December 10th. I know Supervisor Alba is likely gonna be out of state, but we could do it either, he's indicated that we can proceed without him. So, if that date works for us...
Would it be an afternoon meeting?
That's one of the decisions we need to make, and if morning or afternoon could work, I...
I think we have our regular meeting in, and have one up there for the...
Well, the 10th is a Thursday.
Oh, it's a Thursday, well that was...
You know, but we've been trying to get this schedule for months. Just since the 1st of July. Yeah. And nothing's happening, we just, at least need to get both parties together to start something. This likely will be a very short meeting, with the primary agenda item to be adopted, the annual budget. Good.
Well, two questions, is John Benoit gonna be invited to attend from LAPCO to...
To discuss the district?
Well, that issue, because I know at the Cal-LAPCO complex, that was held there just for a day, that this, how the areas approach there is about three different approaches that can be done for. LAPCO plays a role in district formation, so whether you use a JPA, or you use, you create groundwater district specifically, or you adapt like a district like this right here, they're involved in part of that. Now, an MOU, they would not be involved in directly, because that would just be kind of a memorandum of understanding. But when you start getting into the law, there's a provision in the law that has LAPC's involved in that, because I know down in Tulare County, and I think also in, see the Santa Cruz County, or just the one down below, San, no, not, San Luis Obispo County is what I'm thinking of. They've been dealing with this big time, and they have different models in terms of approaches. So I think it would be worthwhile, as we explore through this, that we have that component in part of the discussion, because it may give us a better understanding of what our options are, not just the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District. Because this would be, use it in this fashion, is not, you know, it's not that we can't, but that's, it's a departure from what the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District was established for. So we're basically, it's kind of like what they do in the legislature, where they kind of hijack somebody's bill and use it to push something else through that they started out not to do.
That might be, that might be a good move, because I know there's people from Modoc, they don't think that the Laassen Flood Control District would be appropriate lead agency, probably for a better term, on this, because they say it encompasses a bigger area, and so I know that they have, there's a bunch of questions. Well, yeah. So, okay, so the issue of the meeting, the primary reason for the meeting is an annual meeting, to discuss the budget. And as an agenda item, we could also have a discussion, is the Modoc Flood Control District the proper entity to take over the groundwater management of the basin?
But, but the purpose of the Laassen-Modoc, I mean, it is a large area, but within the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District, you can create zones to do specific things. So you could, within the, you know, it's not all of Laassen County and all of Modoc County, except for the Surprise Valley Drainage would be, is what the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District, yes. You can actually create a zone within that, which could do the groundwater thing, as it would pertain, let's say, to Big Valley. So that, that is an option. But, but the Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District was established basically back in late 1950s for the express purposes of getting the Allen Camp Dam built, which actually has been approved by Congress, it's been authorized. So it's a project within the Bureau of Reclamation, and the Department of Interior, and whatever. The only thing is, is after that authorization was passed, and all the work was kind of laid down, there's never been an appropriation to actually build it. So, we only have one leg of the stool on, so that's the reason why in, you know, 65 years, you know, the Allen Camp Dam, but you know, water storage is, is a big thing that everybody talks about. You know, Brian Dolly is, you know, I mean, he, the mantra is, we gotta capture, they have that sites reservoir they're working on, and I know there was some earthquake and some other data that eventually developed, which made the Allen Camp Dam project maybe less feasible, but whether that can be mitigated or not. So I, you know, I think it's important that we don't lose sight of what, you know, I'm not adverse to us creating a zone to maybe be able to do it, but there again, it's just kind of like how RCDs were set up, and then we grafted on it, you know, the Water Master thing, and now all of a sudden, the RCD thing, instead of doing what it was supposed to do, goes sideways. So sometimes, when you take a vehicle and you co-opt it and use it, you may get some unintended consequences.
So, I think that that is a valid topic for the Modoc-Lassen Flood Control District. I think it's more of an appropriate topic for a joint meeting of the Modoc County Supervisors and the Laassen County Supervisors, who are gonna decide, who's gonna be that groundwater agent.
And we could use that as the venue for that discussion, it may be the...
I, I don't think we're, we're prepared to do that yet, and the reason I say that is, Modoc and Laassen have a little bit different tacks with dealing with the designation of that basin. We are still arguing that it should not be designated such that it needs a groundwater management plan. Modoc has...
Acquiesced to it.
Yeah, I think they've basically acquiesced to it, and think that they're gonna have other groundwater basins they're gonna have to deal with, that don't, that aren't within the Modoc-Lassen Flood Control District as assigned now. So, I, I'm not sure that we're ready to have that discussion with Modoc yet. Yet, we need to have the Modoc-Lassen Flood Control.
Well, I think it'd be helpful if we could have Mr. Benoit there to...
I can certainly invite him.
At least outline what, not that we would act on it at that meeting, but to at least outline what those options are, and what we have to keep in mind as we wait through it.
A report on LAPCO considerations.
Yeah, as LAPCO considerations. Some of what we may do may require LAPCO involvement, some of what we may do may not, but we need to know where those lines are.
Well, we've obtained an opinion from our special counsel that Laassen-Modoc Flood Control District could act as the GSA for that district. I think that there's a competing notion by LAPCO that it's not the appropriate vehicle, so maybe we could have that discussed.
Well, I think, I think we need to sort that out, and that's, would be an opportunity to do it.
Okay, well, we can...
It's not that LAPC's looking for something to do, they would like to, I'm sure, to be less engaged with that than more engaged. But at that conference in Sacramento, I was, I mean, it turns out to be one of the most informative parts of that conference, and I've got, I'll have to dig out the materials, in fact, some of it, Jeff, it's in that binder I brought back to you for you, because you weren't able to make it.
Mr. Supervisor, if you encounter those materials, would you be kind enough to share them with me? I'm interested in that.
Oh, yeah, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you.
But I think it's important, that's the opportunity to be able to do that.
Does that date work for...
Yeah, it can work.
Thursday, the 10th of December.
Monday.
Okay.
And the interesting thing is, Mr. Benoit's also the LAPCO Executive Officer for the Modoc LAPCO, so he is working with both sides of it, so it's not like he would only be interested or could help, he could help the whole group rather than the one of us.
And then, the only other item that I had was, like Supervisor Pyle indicated, I attended the EMCC meeting, and I think pulling up the drastic changes occurred over the last 12 months with regard to emergency medical services, and we've got resources that I don't think anybody would have predicted 12 months ago, available to the community. We've got four brand-new ground-based ambulants, brand-new. We've got PHI is building a helicopter specifically to be stationed here in Suzerville. The one they have here is temporary, until the one that they are happily built is here. And we've also got the other helicopter base here, and so our resources are, notwithstanding issues in the northern part of the county, but in the Honey Lake Valley, much greater than I think we would have expected to have.
Maybe there's something going on that we don't all know about.
Well, it makes you kind of curious about how much money there really is involved in this stuff.
Right.
Yeah, you have two areas, I mean, you're only getting half the calls, each one at 50%.
Right.
You'd think it'd have to have all the calls. From what we heard in our last discussion over the last year, when we put out the contract, we got down to it.
Right.
Okay.
Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Bye.